Since the last round, so. I'm glad to see Chris Ragsdale back in the back and I need to put my glasses on. And this is, I'm just, this is pre imp time. I don't think, we know how fortunate we are to have Chris Ragsdale as our superintendent. He does a great job and plays piano, got big arms, and he's just a great guy. So we're so lucky to have him. All right, we've got one minute, or maybe not that much. Excuse me, sir, are you with the, which school are you with? That's Dad, he works for us, I tell ya. He's okay. It's 5:30, so, what is it? Yeah, mic check. Thanks Dad. I'm Max Bacon, I'm the Mayor of Smyrna, and this is the 12th year that we have had the Mayor's Awards for Education, and this, one of the favorite things I like to do every year. We do it twice a year, and we recognize a student, a teacher, and a support person from every elementary school in this area, and our two middle schools, and high schools, Whitfield, Campbell, and I think that's it, isn't it? But it's great, and I say this every year, how much education means to our community, and what really drives our community is our education in the schools. I want to recognize some council folks that are here. But first, the most important person is Kristy Olmert sitting right here. She's the Administrative Assistant to the Mayor and Council. She is, for me, my brain, so if you want to know anything about anything, you can ask Kristy, because she knows, so. And she helped put this together. Terry Graham is our City Clerk, I'm not sure who else helped with the reception. Tina, in the back, raise your hand Tina, okay? Tammy Sadler Jones is our City Administrator, Scott Andrews is our Deputy City Administrator. We've got some council members here, and one of them is his first, I think, Education Award, isn't it? Tim Goode, who just got elected back in August, should have that date now, so. But he loves education, and he's smarter, and that's why he heads up the Education Committee. Derek Norton, the Mayor Pro Tem, represents Ward 1. Ron Fennell represents Ward 7. Corky Welch represents Ward 4. He likes to be called Charles, but his name's Corky. Right, just the opposite. Not sure if we're gonna have any other members here, but thank y'all so much for coming tonight, and we're gonna do this a little different. I'm gonna pick my favorite high school principal, and I'm gonna let, if I can remember her name, what is her name? Let's see here. Dr. Jean Walker. Isn't this a surprise? Hey, it's too bad you're gonna have to, now you gotta stay. Look, and we've done something different, there's not a podium here, but there's a hole here underneath this mat, so I don't want to claim, or you're lorged to call me in the morning, I don't think that'll collapse.
I'm gonna stay right over here.
So, hey, this is great, y'all don't even need me.
No, no. Well, good evening, it's my pleasure to be here today to recognize three outstanding Campbell High School members. I'm gonna start with this lady to my right, this is Katie Koenig, and she is a parent volunteer at Campbell High School. She's the mother of two Campbell High School students, one has already graduated, and Katie has served as the Hospitality Chair and Vice President for our IB Booster Organization. She was in charge of the Silent Auction last year fundraiser, and she raised over $10,000, and from what I hear, she's already committed to doubling that for this year. She's a huge supporter of our athletic programs, particularly our swim and dive and our girls' soccer team. I had the great pleasure of getting to know Katie when we started a project at Campbell, not long after I got to Campbell, wanted to do a history wall about the history of Campbell High School, because it's so unique and different, and has been here so long, and our picture vendor, Katie Studios, I saw a couple of examples, and tried getting different people to help me with the project, and it always just kind of fell flat. We'd get, make a few steps and then stop. And so, last year, I guess, early on in the year, I was having a conversation with a Campbell parent, and they said, "I think I know just the person who will be able to help you." So sure enough, Katie came on board and did all of the research, and invest, researched pictures, and dates, and people, and this past, when did we put it in? I guess it was October, we had the installation of the timeline at Campbell High School in our Smyrna Hall, and it's a beautiful photo mural, basically, that talks about the history of school from the Smyrna Academy back in 1842. So if you're ever at Campbell, please take a moment to go by and see it, and you will know who made that happen, and it was Katie Koenig. So, really thankful for her and all she does for our school. Thank you, Katie. Hope you come over, watch that whole. Thank you. Next, I'd like to recognize our staff member. Ms. Lisa Chiappa is an English Language Arts Teacher at Campbell High School. This is her second, third, third year at Campbell, so she hasn't been with us a long time, but she's made a tremendous impact in just a short amount of time, and particularly is recognized by her fellow English teachers, who talk about what a big help she is, how supportive she is of others in her collaborative team. She builds great relationships with students, and you can see that by all the students that come back to her classroom, come by her classroom in the hallway just to say hi and see how she's doing. She really works hard to make the instruction relevant for our students, and she's helping us to usher in what we call the new era at Campbell High School, where it's an exciting learning experience for every student, every day. So we are so proud to call you a Campbell Spartan, Ms. Chiappa, thank you for everything you do. Appreciate you. So finally, I would like to recognize our Campbell student, Mario Alexander, and you may recognize Mario's hardware, supported by other distinguished members of our Campbell family. Mario is a JR OTC student, he is also an outstanding academic student, he has a 4.0 GPA. He is a member of the Cobb Police Explorers, and he also is a commander for his battalion at the Cobb Explorers, and he's the State Youth Chaplain for the Police Explorers. He's obviously a well-decorated, honored member of our JR OTC program, we're so glad to have his instructors here to support him. The reason some of you may recognize Mario's face is he's been recognized several times, most recently at the Cobb School Board meeting, and the US Army sent representatives to the School Board meeting to recognize Mario with the Medal of Honor, the highest award given by the Army for his bravery that he showed. September 9th, I believe it was, Mario was working at the Target on Cobb Parkway, and if I, he does a much better job of telling it, but I know we're trying to be fast. So apparently, some, I think they were shoplifters, were running through the store, being chased by several of the security guards, and as they ran by, Mario was working in the cafe, you know, with the popcorn and the hot dogs and all of that kind of stuff, and he realized, he heard somebody had been stabbed, and so he immediately put on some fresh food service gloves, took his apron with him, and went to the aid of two security guards who had been stabbed that day, and gave them, what's the word I'm looking for?
They all won two.
Medical attention, thank you. Medical attention until the medics could get there to take over. But just incredible bravery, incredible strength of character, and initiative, and peace and calm, right, that some of us would have never had in that situation, but he knew that's what he needed to do, and he did it without thinking twice, and he's just a great example of many of our wonderful kids at Campbell High School, and the difference they're gonna make in our community. Mario has committed, he's going into the Cobb Police Force when he finishes his education, and I know he's gonna continue to just be a shining light in our community, so we're very proud of you, Mario. Thank you. Thank you, Mario. Thank you for taking pictures.
I knew I saw her back there, but Susan Thayer, who was our School Board Representative from this area, I thought she was crazy for running, but she's real smart, 'cause she's just ran for one term, but this is be her last month. Susan, I want to thank you so much for all that you've done for Smyrna and for Cobb County. She was just recognized as Smyrna Citizen of the Year. We're gonna miss you, but you're doing the right thing, 'cause this School Board stuff is crazy. You think, you think we're crazy, we're nowhere near crazy. Being on the School Board's a tough job, but I think that we got our fair share during the time that Susan was here, and we'll continue to reap the things that she's done, so thank you so much, Susan. I'm gonna change and go to Russell Elementary, Tammy Watson.
I don't see my student. Courtney? There she is. Courtney was supposed to get here early, because I don't know how to pronounce her last name, so I'm going to ask her when it comes, so you guys know. Okay. Courtney Reshuri, I had to say it quick, 'cause I would forget it. Courtney is a 5th grader at Russell Elementary, and she is a role model student. She's one of those quiet students that, if you didn't know she was there, you couldn't, you know, kind of miss her in the crowd. Courtney is like a straight A student, she is in Science Olympia, and she's in the Russell Road Runners, which is a running group. So I asked her teachers, "What can you tell me about Courtney?", and they pretty much gave me adjectives, they said, "smart, kind-hearted, intelligent, reliable, respectful, role model", and they just kept going on and on and on about Courtney. And Courtney, we just want you to know that we love you at Russell, and I am sad that Courtney is leaving Russell, 'cause, well, she is one of the role models, and she's one of the ones that I can always count on, if she, I need to talk to other kids about things, she will step up, she will talk to those kids, and she's just one of those well-rounded children, and she's not academics now in today's society, it's about your child being well-rounded. So Mom, you did a phenomenal job with her, and she is well-rounded, and we love her.
Oh, before I forget, there's two gift certificates in there. One's $100 from Jim &amp; Nick's, and a $200 one from Zaxby's, is that right? No, wait, hold it. I think you get a piggy salad at Jim &amp; Nick's, and you get a kids' meal. Kids' meal. See, when I start not telling the truth, see what happens? So, anyway, we thank those businesses for helping out.
No problem, no problem. My next person is Patricia Dove, she is my volunteer. Now, what I love about Patricia is, last year was her first year, but what you do as a principal, you find someone who has a kindergarten, because you know that they're gonna be there for six years. So, I kind of got a hold of Patricia, and she was part of my, she did a phenomenal job with that, but with the School Council, she's all on that. Kind of got her into Russell PTA. What I love about Patricia is not just her, it's her and her husband, they come as a unit, they come as a pair. So she comes, and she's lovely, and she smiles, he does all the dirty work, and he enjoys doing all the carrying and the lifting, and the great thing is that she has a son that's coming, I think, next year. So I am like one of the happiest principals in the world, to have Patricia here, kind-hearted, dedicated, will do whatever she needs to do to make Russell what Russell needs to be, so thank you so much, Patricia. And last, but not least, what can I say good about Alexis Lauderdale? No, I'm just kidding. We have a wonderful relationship. Alexis is one of those teachers that you wish every teacher could be like her. She is ESOL certified, she is reading recovery certified, she does dual immersion, she does kindergarten, she does first grade, she does RTI, she does whatever you need her to do to make the school successful. I don't even have to ask her, if she sees a problem, she comes to me and say, "Ms. Watson, do you mind if I take this off?", and I'm like, "Sure!", and she does a better job than I could do with it, so we've got a great relationship. I love her husband, too, he travels a lot, so he doesn't have to do any heavy lifting, but we're gonna get him one day here. But, gosh, she is phenomenal, and this lady has three little kids, like six and under, and she's a dedicated worker at Russell, so she is definitely a role model, and thank you for everything.
Do you think you could walk on these microphones? Hello? Oh, yeah. It's working just as bad as the other one. Hold on a second. Here it comes. I didn't do anything. I wasn't telling the truth a couple times, but, all right, while that's coming up, Argyle Elementary. I can't, I can't see. I don't know. Georgiana Clinton's a, I'm sorry, I can't read. Come up to the microphone, it hopes working. What about, can you fix the air conditioner while you're here, too?
Test 1, 2, 3.
Thank you so much. I am honored to celebrate three wonderful people from Argyle Elementary School. First, we have Angelica Roman, and she's a student that every teacher would love to have. She is, she's well-liked by the students, she's extremely bright, she's very ambitious, hardworking, she has the thoughtful, thoughtful spirit about her, she's very helpful and very kind, she has a gentle spirit, and whenever she's
Test 1, 2. Test. Test, test 1, 2. Test, 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 test 1, 2, 3.
Our next honorary is our wonderful media specialist, Rashawn Wilson, and she represents true forward-thinking as an educator in the school system. She's always improving and educating herself, and then in turn, she uses that to make sure that students are continually growing and addressing some of the areas that they have academically as well as personally. She seeks professional development, she encourages students to do the same, she's coordinated a lunch bunch with one of our local media specialists, and she comes in and reads with the students, and some of the time that she has where she's not working with full classes, she's working with, they are really truly, truly growing their love of reading and learning. She also has a coding club at our school, she's continually showing us as the staff or sharing things related to technology, she's a Microsoft innovative educator, and I think that has really encouraged some of us at the school, and I say us, because, me too, because we have now our, our tech teacher, she's going to come out, and there's a group of us that also want to aspire to be Microsoft innovative educators. So I thank you so much for continually growing as an educator, as a
Belmont Hills Elementary, Ashley Campoli, another Irish name. While they're coming up, I do want to recognize some folks, I was supposed to do this earlier. Kevin, Dr. Kevin Daniels is here, I think he's still here, if he's not, I'm not gonna recognize him, is he still here? Where'd he go? Chris? Dr. Robert Downs, over there, yep. Dr. Jamie Frost. They've got a bunch of doctors that work for the school, that's amazing. Is the mics, now the mics working over here? Okay, you ready? Take it away. No, you can just, this is something somebody did that I, oh, she has the crowd, hey, I know her, I used to work with her.
Good evening, everyone. All right, first I would like to recognize our student, this is Lizette Aponte, very shy, turn around and see everyone. All right, Lizette is a dedicated, kind, and diligent student, who truly embodies the Belmont Hills spirit. She's been at Belmont Hills since kindergarten, and she's now in 5th grade. She devotes herself to every activity and assignment, and is not satisfied until she has done her best. Her writing models a depth of thought and feeling far beyond her years. She models excellence in every area, and achieved the highest level on her end-of-the-year Georgia Milestone Assessment last year. That's worth a round of applause. Lizette is involved in numerous after-school clubs, activities, and leadership programs, including the BNN Network News, Broadcast Club, Safety Patrol, Welcoming Committee, Drum Club, and Chorus. She's an amazing friend, student, and sister, and is always willing to help someone in need. Her gentle and loyal spirit brings so much peace to the classroom. Lizette is completely deserving of this high honor, and we are so proud of her. Congratulations. Next, for our volunteers, we have co-recipients. These are Heather Crowley, this is our PTA President, and Maria Ruiz, our PTA Vice President. Heather is a dedicated single mom to her children's education. Her involvement at Belmont Hills started with Austin in 2nd grade in 2011, who is now in high school. She currently has two at Belmont Hills, a 2nd grader Caleb, and a 3rd grader Ashlyn. She has been part of PTA, leading PTA for three years now, and she is the Chair for the School Council. Maria started at Belmont Hills in 2017, and jumped right in with PTA and the Saturday Discovery Program. Astraya is in 2nd grade, and Luna, her daughter, is now in middle school. Maria helps parents who are completing the process for immigration. Being bilingual, Maria is Discovery's parent liaison. Both ladies run the school PTA store and all PTA functions. They both have, both have instilled a spirit of service in their children, and we congratulate them both.
Heather, congratulations. This is Ms. Ruiz, congratulations, thank you very much.
Last but not least, our staff member, Chuck McMurray. Mr. Chuck, as he is known at Belmont Hills, has been the head custodian since 2014. He has worked with Cobb County School District for 12 years. He's gonna kill me. When I was named at Belmont Hills, Chuck was on leave due to an injury, and was very nervous to find out that he had just received a new principal. I called and asked him to walk the building with me on my second day, even though he wasn't technically supposed to be at work, and he graciously agreed. I could tell he was quite nervous, and I told him not to worry, that his job was safe with me, and that I would wait for him to get well. When I had my meet and greet, he was there, and when we welcomed back the staff, he was there, even though he was still on leave. I had heard how wonderful he was, and how hard of a worker he was, and that was not a quality that could easily be replaced. So I was willing to wait on Mr. Chuck. I am proud to say that he got well quickly, and he is a top-notch custodian. He is my right-hand person, whatever I need, and whenever I need it, he's there. Whether it's returning to school during a snowstorm to take pictures of the beautiful building, because I forgot to, he's there. Or whether it's returning after numerous events where I've been left by myself, and the building is a wreck, and I'm too tired to clean it, he's there. So thank you to my head custodian, Chuck.
Congratulations, thank y'all. Green Acres Elementary, Ashley Mize. Oh, the microphones are not gonna work.
Test, test. Test, test.
Testing. Okay, good evening, everyone. As my Green Acres recipients come on up, I'd like to take just a second, and on behalf of the Green Acres community, and as a citizen of Smyrna myself, I'd like to thank you, Susan, for your time and support to us as a area, and what you have done for us. I don't think you realize how much you did for us over your time on the Board, but it will not be forgotten, and we appreciate it, so thank you for that. And thank you to the Mayor and Council for giving us this opportunity twice a year to recognize the wonderful people in our schools that make them such special places, and make them some of the best schools in the state of Georgia. So I'm gonna start with Ms. Amy Lee, come on, a little closer, Amy Lee. All right, so this is Amy Lee Ortega, she is one of our 5th graders, and Amy Lee is a very quiet young lady, but she's a quiet leader. When I went to her class to tell the class that something special was gonna happen, that one of their students was gonna be recognized, I sat down with them, and I said, "All right, boys and girls, I have someone in your class that's gonna be honored", and I explained about the Mayor's Awards, and they all looked over at Amy Lee before I even said who it was. So that tells you a lot right there. Amy Lee has had great grades since kindergarten. Amy Lee has had great grades since kindergarten. She has been in the soccer club several years. She's quite the soccer player, I hear, as well. Are you going to start playing soon for another league, maybe, too? Okay, so she's quite the soccer player. Cannot wait to see her play. She has been in our Gators Showcase, our talent show. And last year, she was one of our Gardens Design Winners and presented our Evening in the Gardens. So she has many talents. And I really believe this is just the first of many awards Amy Lee's going to receive over the years. And if we had a building of Amy Lees, it'd be a very quiet building, first of all, but we would have a building of leaders, because she is just the best role model in our motto of being Gator Great. So Amy Lee, congratulations on being the recipient for the Mayor's Award for Education. This is Stephanie Quattlebaum. She is our recipient as a volunteer at Green Acres. And I think I met you about a year ago. So Stephanie comes once a month to Green Acres to support our food pantry. So we have a food pantry at Green Acres, and we have 30 families that shop for food. And we couldn't run it ourselves as a staff. We, you know, have so much going on in the building, I had to reach out and ask for some volunteers. So she volunteered. Well, when I first met her, I thought, "Ah, I'll see this volunteer a couple times," and then, you know, because that's what happens sometimes with volunteers, to be honest with you. Well, she's been there every month to support us. And the families are so comfortable with her. And she even reached out to me a few weeks ago and said, "Can I do something special for them and festive at their December distribution?" And I know they're going to love it, because she has such a good heart. She's going to make them feel special. Well, that's not all Stephanie does. Stephanie asked to be more of a part of our school. So I connected her with a second grade class. And she, I will tell you, the teacher said today, "You bring joy when you come in that classroom." And it's because the kids get so excited, and they want to be with you and visit with you and work with you. So she not only runs our pantry once a month, she comes to our second grade almost every week when we don't have crazy things going on in the school. I know that's been an adventure. So she does so much for us. She is our number-one volunteer. And she doesn't think it. She was shocked when I gave her the invite, and she's like, "What? I just come to have fun and hang out with the kids." I'm like, "You just don't even realize what you do." And those of you who are volunteers, you're so valuable to us. And Stephanie, you are so valuable to us, and thank you. And you are our Mayor's Recipient for Volunteer. All right, this lady here, this is Ms. Triplett. Ms. Janice Triplett is a fifth-grade teacher at Green Acres. Now, when I think about my staff and I think about who are my most effective, my best teachers who are really getting something out of my kids, this lady always comes to mind. She is amazing. And it's not because she puts in so many extra hours, although she does. She works very, very hard to make sure her students are successful. And one of our staff members said, actually the person who nominated her, "Her dedication is unparalleled." And I would completely agree with that. And again, it's not because she spends extra hours, although she does, it's because she will not allow her students to fail. And I'm going to tell a little story on her. So at the beginning of the year, she got her class, and I gave her probably the most challenging students in our fifth grade. They were much far behind. And she, I think she was surprised and shocked, and she kind of looked at me and she's like, "Did I do something wrong?" And she didn't say that, because she didn't want those children or didn't want to love on them or do her best with them. But she was shocked and looked at their test scores and looked at what they needed and just couldn't understand why I gave them to her. And I know she probably doesn't remember this, but I told her, "You got this class because you can move them to the next level, and you can help them improve academically. You're an amazing teacher, and they need you." Her expectations are so high for her students, it doesn't matter how low they are. They're going to grow. And I will tell you, Ms. Triplett, I am so thankful for you every day and what you're going to do for these students who've maybe not been successful before. They're going to have success this year. They're already having them. And congratulations on being the Mayor's Recipient as staff member.
King Springs Elementary, Dr. Cindy Sweck. Sweet. Sweet, Sweck. Sweck. S-Z-W-E-C. Sweck. Hello? Hello?
Oh, good, okay. Hi, everybody. I am Cindy Sweck. I'm the principal at King Springs Elementary School. And I'm very excited this evening to recognize these three people. And we're going to start with our student. This is Julia Smith. And I'll tell you how this happens at King Springs. We put out an email to the fifth-grade teachers, and we say, "Now, who really stands out as a great student that we should recognize for the Mayor's Award?" And they send the names in, and then we send all those names to the specialists in the building, to art, music, PE, the media specialists, all of those extra support people. And those are the people who choose our students to receive this award. So Julia stands out, not only in her classroom, but everywhere she goes at King Springs, as an amazing role model, someone who is kind and generous, someone who looks for a solution to a problem, and someone that we are very, very proud to have as part of our school. Julia, you do beautiful things every day at school, and we are so lucky to have you. We appreciate you. Congratulations. Okay, this is Rebecca Kahler. And she is our volunteer to receive this award this time. Rebecca coordinates all of our after-school clubs. So the children who come in the afternoon just for club, or the kids who go to ASP and then go to club and then have to go back to ASP, but they might be a car rider tomorrow. But this time, they're going to be picked up by their mom. But next time on Thursday, the third one of the month, they're going to be picked up by their uncle. But Rebecca handles all of that. When there are children who are supposed to be at club and they're not there, Rebecca is the one who is looking for them. We could not effectively offer all of the exciting after-school clubs that we have without someone like Rebecca to chase after all of the children and make sure that they are there where they're supposed to be and that they get safely to their next spot, whether that's a car rider or whether that's back to the after-school program. So as I was leaving this afternoon, the ASP ladies in the office said, "Please tell her she's our hero." So we are so grateful to have her. Thank you for everything that you do. And this is Dawn McGlaughlin. And Dawn is our clerk at our 2-5 campus. If you're unaware, King Springs lives on two campuses. We have a kindergarten and first-grade building at the old Brown Elementary, and we have a second grade through fifth grade building on Reed Road. And thank you to the hard work of the King Springs community and to Susan Thayer. Thank you. We are ready for our rebuild that will begin this spring. But Dawn is our clerk. And last year, when I first came to King Springs, I saw that she was just like a scurrer, like she does everything. And then this year, we hired a new clerk at the beginning of the school year, and then that clerk left. And so Dawn has handled scheduling and records and talking to parents at different schools and welcoming people and enrolling students, and she does all of it with a most gracious heart. And in the afternoons, there'll be days where I will look and say, "Aren't you ready to go home yet? Well, I just have one more record that I have to copy." Her conscience about making sure that the schools that are receiving and sending students to us have all of the information that they need and that we need is amazing. And thank you so much for doing that, not only at the 2-5 campus, but for supporting and guiding the new clerk at the K-1 campus. You are wonderful, and we appreciate you very much. Thank you.
Nickerjack Elementary, Laura Myers.
Where are my peeps? Good evening, everyone. My name's Laura Meyer. I'm the principal at Nickerjack Elementary. And I'm so honored to be here this evening to be able to share these fine, fine people and their great qualities with you this evening. So our student that was selected for the Mayor's Award is Erin Reddish. Erin's a fifth grader, and she was chosen because of... She displays our B3 character traits every single day. Erin, what are the B3 character traits?
Be respectful, responsible, role model.
That's right. She does it day in and day out. We can always count on her to do the right thing. And she is also a student who works very hard academically, even when she's faced with challenges. She just keeps trying, keeps trying, day in and day out. She's a distinguished leader for her peers. She models cooperation, sportsmanship, and she is also a great citizen whenever she's working together with groups of students. She's also very involved at Nickerjack. She is a member of our Girls to Pearls and Boys to Bow Ties group, our chorus. And she's in the jogging club. She's in science Olympiad. How do you find all the time to do all the great things that you do? She's a model student that every single teacher would love to have in her classroom, and we are so proud of Erin. That was a big sigh, Mr. Roy. So our volunteer this year for the Mayor's Awards for the December session is Mr. Ryan Roy. Mr. Ryan, as I call him, has a second-grade student at our school. And he started working together with some dads, as I understand it, when Christian was in kindergarten. And he just really got involved with that group, and he began to do more and more and more with the group until eventually it kind of evolved into a group that is called the FBI Dads. And FBI stands for...
Fathers Being Involved.
So the group of fathers, and we've had about 60 at our last meeting. They come, in fact, they're coming this Friday. They come five times a year. And they have a breakfast, they have a little program, they talk to their own child about why they're proud of them, and then they go out in the building and they read to students in different classrooms. So it's just been a great opportunity for me to get to know Ryan. He, I know, you know, we appreciate all our volunteers. We've got lots and lots and lots of moms, and sometimes we don't always have as many dads. So it's great for, not only for us to see Ryan so frequently, but for him to bring in fathers to our school as well, to be those great role models for our students. So Ryan is, he's an accountability coach. So I have to really watch myself as a new principal, because he really likes to, you know, make sure everyone's doing the right thing all the time. And we try. So in addition, he's just, you know, he's kind of that go-to dad that I can say, "Hey, I need this." In fact, in the fall, he cooked 185 hot dogs for us. So I am very, very proud that you are receiving this honor this evening, because you are so important to Nickerjack, and we appreciate you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. He's a hugger. And finally, our staff member who is receiving the award this evening is the lovely and beautiful Dawn Harrell. She's as beautiful on the inside as she is on the outside. She is a special education teacher at Nickerjack. And I am a firm believer that you are kind of born to be the teacher that you are. For example, a kindergarten teacher, okay, that's not me. Okay? That's not me. And I'm so thrilled with those of you who are. But Dawn is a special education teacher. And she is a perfect example of a teacher who cares for all of her students. She has this ability to nurture, to understand, to push, but to know when to pull back just a little bit. She knows all of her students so well, she is able to highlight their gifts and make them feel special every single day. And not only the students at our school love Dawn, but our teachers, our parents. In fact, Dawn was named Teacher of the Year at our school for this year. And then, no, that's not all. She was also named District Teacher of the Year for Elementary School in Cobb County. And if you don't believe me, you can take a look at that yellow Jeep that's sitting out in the parking lot that she gets to drive this year as a result of that. So Dawn, you make a difference every single day, and we appreciate you so much.
Norton Park, Michelle Curry. While they're coming up, I want to just remind everybody, if you leave here and hang a left and go through our Village Green circle, it's free. Our lights are beautiful this year. So if you get a chance, go through. We can't get microphones to work, but we've got great lights.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Michelle Curry. I'm the proud principal of Norton Park. And I have three wonderful family members from the park to recognize today. And the first one we'll start with is Ms. Marisol. Hold on, Ms. Marisol. And the way that we find our student that we pick, we give it to the fifth-grade team, and the fifth-grade team decides, "Who should that person be? Who is that student that exemplifies the qualities that we think stand out for Norton Park?" And that is Marisol. So I'm going to read a little bit about what they said about her. "The selection of Marisol was based on her great statue at Norton Park Elementary School. As a soaring fifth grader, Marisol manages to maintain exemplary academics while serving as an ambassador for our school, as well as a safety patrol officer. Aside from her distinguished duties, she volunteers with the Atlanta Community Food Bank monthly to help those in need of assistance. Marisol is a respectful, well-disciplined, selfless student. She can be counted on for doing the right things at all times. Her acts of being polite to adults and peers makes us proud to have her here at Norton Park Elementary School. We look forward to the future successes that Marisol will have. Marisol, you are a wonderful student, and congratulations." Next, we have Officer Hagar. Officer Hagar often comes into the building, and we know he's there, because he says, "Hey, what's going on today? Everything good?" So it's always great to have Officer Hagar around. Anytime I need something, I can always call Officer Hagar at any time. When a student is still there with me some days at six, I call Officer Hagar, "Can you go do a check for me at the house just to see if we could actually drop our student off?" He's always willing to do it. He is just dependable. He's hardworking. He's caring, and he's selfless. Officer Hagar, thank you for all that you do. I know you are retiring. I'm going to be heartbroken, but I... Oh, I will. But I have your number. So don't worry, I'll be calling you. Thank you so much for all that you do. Thank you so much for all that you do. Come on down. Our staff member is Ms. Marcia Senior. When I became principal of Norton Park, she doesn't know I'm going to tell the story. And I usually don't. So, when I became a principal at Norton Park, I had a time where you could come and sit down and chat with the new principal. You know what I'm saying?
I know exactly what you're saying.
And so, what we do in Cobb County is we write a letter to our community. She took the letter, she dissected the letter, she went through the letter, and then she was ready for me. She had things highlighted and she made sure to ask every single question she had. Marcia Senior is the type of faculty member that every principal wants. Every principal. Anything I need, I go to Ms. Senior. When I want to know what's going on in the school, I go to Ms. Senior. When I have an idea that I'm not sure this may work, Ms. Senior, what you think about this? She gives me that honest, truthful advice that I need. And Ms. Senior is wonderful. So, I asked several people to write things about Ms. Senior. They had pages and pages. But I'm going to read just a little bit, okay? I promise. Ms. Senior is an inspiring educator. She loves her students and is one of their biggest supporters and advocates. Her day begins at almost the same time the building opens every day. And unlike her, it is not unlike her to be there past the time most of us leave. What sets Ms. Marcia Senior apart from most educators is that even after 31 years of teaching, she maintains the same passion that she did the first day that she became a teacher. She sees the potential in everyone and will continuously push those around her to achieve that potential. I'm so thankful to have the opportunity to work with Ms. Senior. Ms. Senior is an awesome person and she's the best to have around. Ms. Senior, thank you for all that you do at Norton Park.
Sharon, that's another Italian name. Arduino. Is that Italian? Is that Italian?
Yes, I am.
Oh, well, that's okay.
That's okay.
I am too. Bacononi.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Sharon Arduino and I am the principal at Smyrna Elementary. And we are recognizing three fabulous people from Smyrna. I don't see our student here right now, but I'll start with Michelle. So, Michelle...oh, here she comes. Here she comes. Michelle is our Classified Employee of the Year at Smyrna Elementary and I'm glad to be celebrating her again because she deserves it. It's obvious, as she was nominated for that award, that the staff respects her greatly and knows how hard she works. She is the first one in the front office in the mornings. And if you've ever been in a front office in an elementary school, you know how incredibly busy it is with phone calls, people buzzing IDs to check, and lots of busy things going on. And she handles that responsibility with grace. And that's what I appreciate with...about her. She always has a smile on her face and she's greeting everyone. And I know that that can be a very, very busy place, but she handles those difficult situations calmly. So, we just wanted to recognize her for being the fabulous office staff member that she is and also recognizing her again for being our Classified Employee of the Year. This is Blanca Alvarez. And Blanca and I met for the first time this year. So, just a quick, short story about Blanca. When Smyrna Elementary opened this year, we did not have lunchroom monitors. So, tried to visualize 1,050 kids eating in a cafeteria without anybody to help. And it was all hands on deck. And I have to say that after about the first week, I think, the administration decided, phew, that's about all I could take. But Blanca kept showing up. And so, we appreciate her so much. She is our volunteer that we're recognizing tonight. But what I love about Blanca is clearly her smile and her sweet spirit. What I find is that when I come around to the front office, Blanca is always in the front office asking what she can do to help. And that's incredible. Most people wouldn't come up to a school every single day and say, what else can I do to support the school? So, Blanca is well-deserving of this award. So, thank you so much, Blanca. So, our student that we would like to recognize is Karen Valesquez. And she is a fifth grader at Smyrna Elementary. And similar to what most people have said tonight is she represents what Smyrna calls a Smyrna rock star because she shines so brightly in her classroom. In her classroom, she is diligent about her schoolwork. She gives 100% all the time. You'll probably find her working in her classroom on her work, but what you'll also find is that she's willing to go and help others around the classroom with anything that they might need as well. Her teachers describe her as empathetic, as confident, as respectful. And we are just so proud that she is our recipient of the Mayor's Award tonight because she is well-deserving of it. So, congratulations to you, Karen.
Congratulations.
Leslie Manfield, she's here every year. She's coming back.
Call me crazy.
Yeah, that's all.
Thank you so much, Mayor, council members. We're so appreciative of this opportunity. And I'm going to start with this young fellow right here. Our recipient for the Mayor Awards for our students is Jonathan Edens. And Jonathan is a fifth grader. And I do believe that any staff member that knows Jonathan is in line to take him home and just keep him forever because he is just that wonderful of a boy. Jonathan is...I got to know him earlier this year. I mean, I know him, of course, but I got to know him well because he was one of our Tiger Squad students. The Tiger Squad is students who help out at carpool in the morning. And so, Jonathan just happened to be stationed next to me most mornings. So, we would just chat and I got to know him so well. And without a doubt, I have never met a more polite young man in my life. So, his mom and his stepdaddler here, and you all should just feel so good about this young man that you have raised because he's phenomenal. He's a wonderful soccer star. He played on Teesly's team against Smyrna. It was a tie. Better luck next year, right? He is involved in martial arts. He got first place at Tongsa earlier, I believe, this year. And what I think stands out the most about him at school is how others' focus Jonathan is. And that is not a trait that you see in kids very often. But he is always more concerned about others than he is about himself. And it's what his teacher says, he's always looking out for his classmates. He's just...he's phenomenal. So, he's not going to middle school. He's a great student, but he's going to be a perpetual fifth grader for a while. So, you don't mind, do you? We love you, Jonathan. Congratulations for being our recipient for the Mayor Award. You're welcome. I love you. No, he looks handsome, doesn't he? Next is our volunteer. This is Sarah Keller. And Sarah is our PTA president this year. She is the mom of Harrison, who is in first grade, and Caroline, who is in third grade. And they're amazing, too. But I think the thing that I love the most about Sarah is just her heart for children. As she stepped into the PTA president role this year, just thinking outside the box and thinking about ways to recognize our kids and really embracing some of the things that we're doing at Teesly. You may know that we're a candidate school for International Baccalaureate. And they have a learner profile, which really is the overarching, really kind of the linchpin that holds all of International Baccalaureate together. And she's put together a program where every month, a child from every classroom is being recognized for demonstrating one of the learner profile traits, like being principled or balanced or something like that. And so, I just love that you want to do everything that you can do to help Teesly, but I love that at the heart of it is our kids and that's really what it's all about. So, thank you. We appreciate you. And then, last but never least, this is Maria Braswell. And Maria is a fifth grade teacher at Teesly. And just a little trivia, my first year at Teesly, eight years ago, Maria was a student teacher. And I knew she was a gem then, but I was so brand-new that, you know, I probably didn't know then what I know now. But now, I know that she is simply amazing. So, she is our Teacher of the Year, but she's...well, she's so amazingly deserving of that. But the things that Maria does and her ability to think outside the box and do things that help our school to be innovative are simply amazing. She has been a recipient of a Cobb Tank Award a couple of years ago. She's a finalist again this year. She presented at a state conference for the Georgia Department of Education this summer. She's part of the Humanities in Practice Leadership Academy. I mean, I could really just keep going on. She's part of a Leadership Academy for future administrators. She is just phenomenal. And I think one of the things I love most, we sit in leadership meetings and I ask for ideas and I ask for things that we could do to improve our school. And without a doubt, Maria is always one of the ones that has ideas. And it's not just having the idea, it's having the ability to put wheels to that and put legs to the things that she thinks of that'll help our school and always does that. She's the fifth grade team leader. She's just...she's a gem and a half and I'm so grateful that I get to work with her. So, Maria, thank you for all you do for Teesly.
Dr. Camille Havas. Didn't we have lunch one day?
We did.
I think I bought, didn't I?
You bought lunch, yes.
The person that hooked us up wasn't going to buy one.
No, Linda Keeney was not. She's cheap. And you told me to keep it brief. I remember that. So, good evening. I'm Camille Havas. I'm the proud principal, new principal of Campbell Middle. And first, I would like to introduce my volunteer of the...of this semester, I guess, or right now, Libby Tyre. And Ms. Tyre is our PTSA co-president. She is a devoted partner in education. She volunteers her time and is an avid contributor to the educational well-being of the students of Campbell Middle. With her support, we were able to deliver more teacher rewards, celebrate students more positively, and promote the positive culture of Campbell IB. We have actually doubled our intake of funds, which was good for PTSA. We're still earning more money, though. And since our first meeting, I've been impressed by her willingness to just get it done. She is a mother, wife, and active member of the Smyrna community. Please welcome Libby Tyre. Next, I would like to introduce seventh grade student Andy Bonilla. Andy is a former Student of the Month. Andy has been described by his teachers as kind, giving, and highly motivated. They also stated he cares about his community by going above and beyond in the classroom to help others and volunteers to translate important information to our English language He's an all-around good student that makes Campbell Middle School proud. Andy is described with those IB learner traits as balanced, principled, open-minded, and a thinker. He is the kind of student that makes his family proud. Andy Bonilla. She is highly energetic and dedicated to her students. She was the first teacher chosen as Teacher of the Month this year. Ms. Hannibal teaches sixth grade accelerated reading and middle school gifted resources. In addition, she serves as the sixth grade level lead teacher. And after one month in the role, she stepped up in helping to solve student transition issues, student discipline issues, and consistently tweeting nothing but positivity. You're the most consistent tweeter at Campbell Middle School, that is for sure. Positive things that are happening in the sixth grade classrooms. Ms. Hannibal has been a...has been a teacher for 14 years. She is from Louisiana and a graduate of Shorter University. She and her husband have a daughter that attends Hill Grove High School. And when she has free time, she likes to read and travel. Ms. Derica Hannibal.
Paul Gilhan, principal. And listen, I want to thank everybody for waiting. I know it takes a long time, seems like a...especially when you're at the bottom of the list. Next time I'm going to flip it, Quitfield Academy will go first. I promise.
Well, thank you. I am Paul Gilhan, the grateful principal of Griffin Middle School, where we pride ourselves on being here, being ready, and being respectful. And tonight, we have three amazing honorees. And to help us start off, we have our student, Ms. Amori Thomas. And I'm going to have our eighth grade administrator tell you about Amori.
All right. Well, thank you very much for having me. I am so excited. This year, we piloted this massive growth mindset in the eighth grade. And I have the pleasure of our entire eighth grade team who just said, that's our girl. She is growth mindset. What she is, is that she has overcome some obstacles and some challenges. She started out in some general education classes and then moved up to accelerated classes and has just blown it out of the water. But not because she is...she's super talented. The issue is, is that she comes back and she goes over an obstacle. She comes back again. And then she goes over another obstacle. She comes back again. And she never stops. She is so patient, so gritty, that she will not stop at anything to get where she needs to be. And that's why we are so honored to celebrate you. Our entire eighth grade team is proud to have you as our wonderful, wonderful goat getter for this semester. Thank you. You're awesome. Good evening. 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 Good evening.[1714.13]
I am blessed to have a phenomenal staff at Griffin Middle School. But as we do in Cobb, we like to use data to make our decisions. So I gotta put on my glasses, Max. That's how you do it a while ago, so I gotta do that. I have to use my data. Now, my teacher nominee is Ms. Lori Quintana. Now Lori is our media specialist, and she's been with us, I think this is her fourth year that she's been with us. And as everyone has said, she's the person that you go to and all of that, and she is. I've asked her to be on our Guiding Coalition, and she said yes. I said, "I need help with a newsletter." She said yes. I asked her, "Hey, I'm thinking about doing a presentation at the National Principals Conference. Do you wanna help?" She said yes. So she, everything. But a little data, in the media specialist's position, you are the hub of the school. You know, everything that's going on. And last year at our Guiding Coalition, at the end of the year, we were going over data. And we noticed that we, our reading literacy scores needed to improve some. So we're throwing around things and everything. Lori said, "Why don't we do a Read 30 initiative? We can plan it during the summer." I said, "Go for it." I said, "I want this to be teacher-driven and teacher-led." So she stepped up to lead it. We had 30 teachers, roughly 30 teachers, participating during the summer, during the spring, planning for this Read 30 that we do in sixth and seventh grade. Now then, for the data part. In the media center, we put up how many books are checked out every month. So from August of last year until this time, November the 30th of last year, we checked out 6,785 books. That's a really, really good number for a middle school. Fast forward to this year with our initiative, Lori's enthusiasm in the media center, so far to date, we have checked out 22,072 books. We have surpassed our total for the whole year last year by 8,840 books. We have a whole lot of reading going on in Griffin Middle School. So we're anxious to see the rest of the data at the end of the year, but right now, the data looks good. And I couldn't do what I do at our school without Lori Quintana, and she happens to bring her husband to school, too, because he teaches at our school, too. But anyway, Lori, I'm thankful. Thank you for everything. Mayor Bacon, I tried to get your granddaughter to come up here and heckle you for a minute, but she wouldn't.
She knows better.
Covenant Christian School. Dr. Robert Barber, headmaster. They have patiently been waiting. Max Angel again, Los Bravos. If you've never been there on a Friday night, I wouldn't suggest, because there's too many families and kids running around. I went one Friday night, and I said, "I ain't gonna do it." But I do, I usually go and sit in the bar, so. I'm just an observer. How you doing?
We're fine. Sorry I had to wait so long. I appreciate it. I'm sorry I kept you waiting. Once again, let me begin by saying thank you, Smyrna, for your support of shaping the future by pouring into the lives of children today. Every time you shape a child's mind and heart, you're touching all the people that those children are gonna touch in the future. So you're building a marvelous future here in this community. I want to introduce to you Covenant Christian School's student nominee this year. Her name is McKenna Both. McKenna is not only an excellent scholar, really working hard and getting great grades in everything she does, but she's been a servant to our school in many ways. McKenna's been involved in leadership in the student council, our Honor Society. She sings in our school choir. And that's just a few of the things that she's done to leave a mark here on our school. But beyond our school, she's also served on several short-term mission trips, both here locally, impacting the lives of folks in our community and in third-world countries. So really, McKenna represents what we try to do in making disciples of our children who are both, who have both wisdom and eloquence. And McKenna, congratulations. Thank you so much for representing us. From the faculty of Covenant Christian School, again, I have to agree with those administrators that have gone before me, it's difficult for us administrators to select one above another, but we try to select someone who represents the spirit of our entire faculty. And this year, we've selected Cynthia Ray to be our nominee as a teacher worthy of this recognition. Cynthia has never wanted to sing her own praises. She's one of the hardest-working teachers that we know. Even with limited resources, she provides hands-on science lessons that teach important scientific principles. She knows what high schools expect of incoming students, and math students and science students, and she provides solid instruction, enhanced by using our SAT scores to strengthen the scores of our seventh and eighth graders. And our improving scores reflect her work. In addition, she often tutors students after school in basic math skills for the end, and for entry exams for their high schools. She's a strong Christian witness, both in the school to our students and in the community to others. And she diligently provides biblical teaching to support her math and science lessons. And I know it's a smaller token that we honor you tonight. We honored her by giving her a whole new science lab this year at Covenant Christian School. Cynthia, congratulations. Thank you. Covenant Christian School really enjoys being a part of the community, and we love it when the community comes and enjoys being a part of what we do. And so because of a literature book that we read in fourth grade called The Trumpet of the Swan, one of our teachers came up with the idea of inviting Stanley Kirk, who's a representative of the local Farm Bureau, to come to our school. We had no place to distribute, we came up with the idea of hatching baby chicks, but we had no, no place to distribute the chicks. However, we heard, she, one day, one of our teachers heard roosters in her neighborhood. And she did some investigation, and she found that the roosters were in the yard of a neighbor, Mr. Stan Kirk, who's a president of the American Farm Bureau. Mr. Kirk not only agreed to take our baby chicks, but he has supplied all the materials needed to care for baby chicks in our classroom for the past three years. He's allowed our K-4, first, second, third, and fourth-grade students to be up close with living animals, not just chickens, but piglets, goats, sheep, and many other farm animals that he's actually brought onto our campus to share with our students. Most recently, he brought pumpkin seeds to plant in our school garden. Hopefully, we'll be harvesting them this year. The fourth and fifth-grade students of 2016 and 2017 visited the assistant living facility of Mr. Kirk's late mother to sing Christmas carols recently. They build a valuable relationship with Mr. Kirk, and he's been a great asset to our Covenant Christian School community. And so we are pleased to honor him as our volunteer this year and here to accept the award, because he's busy and not able to be with us tonight. It's his son. I've forgotten your first name. Brandon. Brandon, he just told me, and I forgot. Say thank you to Brandon.
Yeah. You don't wanna picture? Just go ahead.
So my dad had a couple of words he wanted me to tell you. So he's sad he couldn't be here tonight. Like they said, he was, he's at the Georgia Farm Bureau Annual Conference that's in, held in Jekyll Island every year. And he's representing farmers for our county and our state and trying to make things better for the world as a whole. He enjoys coming out to the classroom. You know, it's, it's, his biggest passion in the world is agriculture, and, you know, he just loves sharing that with other people. And, you know, for both of us, it's, it's just the most fun thing in the world, seeing kids' faces when they see a chicken or a pig for the first time, and just, we really think that it sparks education and it teaches just so many life lessons. So we're really grateful for the opportunity to be able to come out. Thank you.
International Academy of Smyrna. This is Zinta Perkins, that name sounds familiar. Director of Operations.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for staying and being a part of the recipients that we have here from International Academy of Smyrna. My name is Katrina Brinker, and I am head of school, the proud head of school at International Academy of Smyrna. And I have Ms. Perkins accompanying me. She is my right hand as Director of Operations. So I'd like to introduce to you our first recipient, Ms. Madeline Virgil. Madeline is a sixth-grader at International Academy of Smyrna, and she has been a student with us since the kindergarten. She performs well academically, and she's involved in cheerleading and gymnastics. She also makes blankets for the homeless, and she enjoys writing nonfiction stories. When we spoke this afternoon, she shared with me that she does want to attend college. She's not quite sure which one yet, and she's ultimately considering becoming a cosmetologist or a chef, with hopes of opening her own eatery specializing in desserts and gourmet coffee. She'll definitely have me as a customer. She exudes confidence and intellect, with the ability to be an exemplary resource for her peers, both academically and socially. Her teachers also state that Madeline is community-minded. Her thought process is intuitive in nature, and she's definitely a risk-taker, unafraid to try new things. Along with being a critical thinker, Madeline understands the importance of leadership and respect. I am so proud that she represents IAS. She is strong-willed and determined to always show growth. She is a purpose-driven scholar. Madeline comprises what we want in our future leaders and adults in this society. I have no doubt that she will do something fantastic to make a difference in our world. Next, we have one of our fantastic teachers at IAS, Ms. Ashley Haney. I had the pleasure of meeting Ms. Haney last year, my first year at IAS. She's been with IAS for seven years. My first impression of her was, I like her, but she really doesn't say much. And she's very nice, but she just doesn't talk a whole lot. But as I got to know her, she spoke through her actions. Ms. Haney is always available, she's always visible, and she's always making a difference, not only in her classroom, but throughout our school. Ashley loves her students, she relates well with them, and she is a leader. I began to call her the quiet storm. As I pulled her from her comfort zone, giving her opportunities to lead, she graciously accepted. And yet again, she made a difference. She was charged with developing and overseeing our extended learning program last year, and she did an outstanding job as she facilitated, brought teachers together, and oversaw the instructional aspects of the program. Ashley also oversees our instructional software use in our school. She provides teachers with training, as well as showing them how to appropriately use the software. She is the department lead for our early intervention program for our students, and she teaches gifted classes, and she does whatever is needed throughout the school, and she serves in the cafeteria, and she is a support for her fellow teachers. Ms. Haney is a definite asset to IAS, staff, students, and parents. It's rare to meet someone like her, and I am so humbled, grateful, and just heartfelt thankful that she is a part of our IAS family. Last but not least, my volunteer, Ms. Nicole Pugh. I met Nicole Pugh last year at a PTA meeting, and she is so vivacious, so full of personality, so full of, what can I do next? And that's how we met. She approached me and she said, "I have a ton of ideas and I'm ready to go." And she wanted to set up all kinds of trampolines and bouncy houses and anything that she could do to garner some fun for our students. She's been an IAS parent for four years. She is the proud mother of two sons who attend IAS. And she is honored to serve our state as newly-appointed major with the Georgia Army National Guard. She got that appointment yesterday, and I'm just so proud of her. Let's congratulate her for serving our state and our country. Ms. Pugh is one of our school's biggest supporters. She orchestrates in-house field trips with the National Guard for our kindergarten students each year. She arranged for donations for several treasure boxes of toys to fill the principal store as incentives for our students. She donates her talents, her creativity, by making beautiful balloon arrangements and other scenic decorations that suit the needs of the theme for whatever event we're having at our school. The great part about Ms. Pugh is we don't have to ask her to do anything. She immediately just volunteers. She steps up, she brings it, she makes it, and she just makes it happen for our scholars. She's always willing to step in, be it in one of her son's classrooms or to support the school in general. Her infectious smile and warm hugs of support, along with her thoughtful and personalized gifts that she often shares with staff members to make their day, simply exemplifies her love and her commitment for IAS. I am so excited to just thank her and honor her for being our volunteer, and thank you so much, Ms. Pugh, for all that you've done.
Whitfield Academy. Kevin Brockford's the head, head of the school, and they've been waiting, and somebody gotta be last, but you're gonna be first next time.
Well, you know, I think there might even be biblical support for that. There's something in Scripture that says, "Those who will be last will be first."
That's right.
Remember that, that'd be good. Yes, I'm Kevin Brighter, head of school at Whitfield Academy, and I am excited to present these honorees this evening. We're a pre-K through 12 school. We're a Christ-centered college preparatory school with over 850 students, and what we do is support families in, in preparing their students for college and life with a passion for learning, a passion for others ahead of self, and a passion for the living and active Jesus. And I'm excited to talk about Donovan Pierce this evening, because he exemplifies that mission. And Donovan has been in our school since pre-K, and now he's a senior, and so, and also a Smyrna resident. So very proud of him and what he's become and accomplished at Whitfield. But he's one of our students who excels in math and science, thrives on critical thinking challenges, and all of our STEM initiatives. He loves the freedom and creativity of English with writing and poetry. Often, he will include a poem on the back of most of his homework assignments. He's a fantastic musician. He listens to all genres from classical to swing jazz, composes music, and plays multiple instruments. Donovan really does have that passion for learning, even outside of Whitfield Academy. He's participated in the ID Tech Camp at Emory, the Georgia Tech Science Bowl and Industrial Engineering Summer Program, and the Summer at Brown Selective College Prep Program at Brown University. He's known for his ability to solve the Rubik's Cube with his eyes closed, and what I hear also, he's known for loving terrible puns. One teacher says of him, "It is his passion, curiosity, curiosity and joy in learning that truly make him a standout student. He's the kind of young man who will pursue his interests, solve problems, uncover exciting new insights, and always be a pleasure to work with." Donovan is a very conscientious, dedicated, and talented young man. He's done an extraordinary job designing the drill for our marching band the past two years. His strengths in computer science, coupled with his trumpet skills and deep musical understandings, make him a superstar in our band program. He's been a soloist in the marching concert and jazz bands at Whitfield Academy, and he's participated in all district honor band, is a member of the Triumph National Music Honor Society, and is a true leader among his peers. And Donovan is looking at colleges now, he's considering his top three, possibly following in the footsteps of his sister who's at Stanford, possibly following in the footsteps of his mom who's at Northw, who went to Northwestern, or possibly charting his own course at Rice, or Harvard, or Princeton, or Vanderbilt, or Duke, Georgia Tech. He's got a lot of options, and he's sorting through all those options. But we're very proud of Donovan Pierce. Congratulations. Also, would like to recognize Megan Beard this evening. Megan is actually one of the alumni of Whitfield Academy. So she graduated from Whitfield. She went, after going to school, to study education. She taught for several years in Florida, and then she came back to teach at Whitfield and has been teaching there for several years as a third-grade teacher. She actually earned the Teacher of the Award, Teacher of the Year Award last year, and we're very proud of Megan and happy to have her as a part of the Whitfield family again. What, what Megan says about why education's important to her is because she loves learning herself. She's, she was inspired by teachers and coaches at Whitfield who pulled out her capabilities as an athlete and as a student. Now she desires to do the same for her students. What, what's also important quality that, that Megan possesses, she has the ability to show students how they learn best and recognize the importance of teachers adapting how they learn best and recognize the importance of teachers adapting to the students' needs. She encourages them to make an investment so that they can take ownership of their own work and want to learn. She's, what her peers say about her and what we see every day is that she is kind-hearted, passionate, has a heart for others, and really does nurture those students, and they learn so much in her class. And so we're so thankful to have you, Megan. Congratulations. So I'm also thankful to honor Jim Kelly. He is a volunteer at our school. He's also a father at our school. I loved what one of the schools said about FBI fathers being involved. We have a lot of involvement of our moms and our dads, and Jim Kelly is one of our dads of Sawyer and Decker, who are students at Whitfield. And Jim, even before he was a dad of Whitfield students, he was very much involved in the beginning of the LEGO Robotics Movement. He has written several manuals that have been published related to that movement. And so as he became a father at Whitfield, he has invested in the community by using his talents to support us. He was instrumental in the beginning of our Innovation Lab a couple of years ago, and has continued to help out in so many ways through summer programs and through the Innovation Lab. He's volunteered his time by teaching a 3D printing class, a course on Tinkercad, and a video game programming class. In addition to him donating his time to teach, he's helped the lab acquire and troubleshoot equipment, provided guidance in getting the lab up and running. He's been a great asset in this endeavor to offer kids the chance to explore STEAM concepts. So we're just so thankful for the time that you have given to Whitfield, and glad to honor you this evening.
And that concludes our program. We have a council meeting that starts at 7:00. But thanks to everyone that was here tonight. Thank you so much for giving back to your community and your schools. Thanks to Susan Thayer, who gave us four great years. Well, she did more than that. Thanks to Chris Ragsdale, the best superintendent anywhere. Y'all can stay and watch government how it works or doesn't work, but thank y'all so much. Everybody have a good Christmas and a happy holiday.